So I'd like to call the regular meeting of council, March 23rd, to order. There are a couple of changes on the agenda, folks. The Woodwin Farms was to provide us with a presentation, but the presenter is ill, and they've asked to have that rescheduled, so if we could take that one off under 6.1. And the other one is an email request for a letter of support for Seapark Recreation on a grant application that they were -- so if council will indulge me to add that into correspondence. And with those two amendments, motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor, posed, motion carried. Public participation, it is time here, folks, for those of you who have something to say to do that, but I just want to get a feel for things here, and I understand that there have been some notices posted down in the Ocean Grove site in regards to coming to this meeting, and I'm just wondering if there's a bit of confusion, because there is no discussion on Ocean Grove this evening. The public hearing is next Monday at 6:00. So I just wanted to put that out there first and foremost. We do have an agenda item on our agenda for this evening, but it is simply a motion to receive, so it is just a formality of the process. So I just don't want a lot of people thinking that we're getting into some big discussion or whatever here. But with that, I think, you know, that, yeah, that's all we've got is a motion to receive for this evening. So 6:00 on Monday, March 30th. It's going to be here, staff? They, we're not moving it anywhere? Okay, yeah, so City Hall for Monday, March 30th at 6:00 PM. Having said that, I'll now open it up to public participation. We do have a few minutes, so if anybody does want to step up and have a comment to council, we are here to hear that.
Gail Johnston, 245 Ship's View. First of all, I want to thank Councilor Martin and Evo Vanderkamp for sitting down and answering my questions about Ocean Grove this morning, and I was just looking at-
Excuse me, but I'm gonna have to excuse myself for conflict of interest as I live at Ocean Grove.
Thanks, Councilor Trace.
I wanted to thank Councilor Martin and Evo Vanderkamp for sitting down and answering my questions from the appendix this morning. Of course, once I got home, a few more came to mind, so I thought I would bring them up here, so you guys can think about them before the public hearing. Given that there are approximately 20.03 hectare lots, which will not be included in the strata and could be sold off to other developers, I'd like to know what can the city do to prevent this developer from selling off other building options? This would prevent him from ever reaching his target unit numbers, and the city and taxpayers are on the hook for the promised amenities. Does the city need to change or update any rules to safeguard our community before this developer gets his final approval? And as a community, we have only had two or three opportunities to see this conceptual plan in a very crowded, noisy location. I would like to see an actual table model of his entire development, including riparian areas, buildings, roads, existing and new, because I still have some issues about emergency egress, parkways and pathways. Will this be available at the public hearing? I hope so. On the appendix, items K and L, if this developer is going to spend the money to redesign the intersection of Lagoon and Machosen as per item K with the left turn lane and the crossing and all the lights, I'm just, and he was gonna have that done within 12 months of approval of his development, I'm just wondering, why do we have to wait for signalization to happen until after 240 residential units have been completed? That doesn't make sense to me if it's all there and ready to go. There's a huge safety concern in that area already with traffic and speed of traffic, parking and pedestrians from both Sangster and Dunsmere crossing from there to Painter Road. Another question I had, will there be any more geothermal drilling? Maybe if I'd looked at Evo's binder, I could answer my own question, but I don't, I didn't. Finally, I think there are still enough questions and a lot of room to shorten the timeline for community amenities, especially since at least half the number of total amenities listed in this appendix seem to occur on or before 350 units. This will hopefully be a long-term, successful completion to the prime piece of Callwood real estate. Therefore, I would like the city not to rush and take a few more weeks to iron out the kinks, so to speak. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Judith Allen, 3333 Anchorage Avenue, and I also had some comments about Ocean Grove, following up on the things that Gail had to say. One of my biggest concerns has to do with pedestrian safety on Lagoon and Heatherbell, especially for the school kids. The upgrades to Heatherbell are coming at the very end, and I know there is a temporary sidewalk that's going to be put in, and I just wanted to urge that that sidewalk be put on the Royal Road side of Heatherbell, so that the students can walk along Heatherbell and up Lagoon without having to cross in front of the trucks. They won't have to cross Lagoon Road at all, and they also won't have to cross where the trucks turn into Heatherbell for their entrance there. This should make a big difference to their safety. I also wondered, I know that the small houses are the ones that are going to be built first, and they're the ones that are closest to the Lagoon, and I, my concern was how the trucks were going to get in there, as there isn't a road into that area, and I was just hoping that they wouldn't be trying to come through Goldfinch, which I know is built on a swamp area and would cause a lot of problems to pollution in the Lagoon should that happen. So I don't know, I haven't seen anything in a plan to show where the roads would come through, so that it would, is it going to be accessed from up on Heatherbell even when it's down low there? That concerns me. Another, my other concern was that there needs to be an alternate route out of the area onto Lagoon. If there's a fallen tree on Heatherbell or an accident there, or if there's a fire or gas leak or evacuation call, we'd have Pacific Grove plus Pacific Landing plus all of the Portsmouth area trying to get out Heatherbell all at the same time, and that really concerns me. That's, in the end, will be about 1,000 homes, I think, and it just seems to me dangerous to, not to provide another access route out. And one more point, which I forgot, was I, the, I know that there were security deposits, and that there was some problem with that before, when the previous owner went bankrupt, and I just wanted to ask whether you are going to make sure that the security deposits are irrevocable, so that we don't end up having to, with residents having to foot the bill for all of that. Thank you very much.
Stuart Parkinson, 3230 Sellic Way, and guess what, I'm here to talk about Ocean Grove, too, that you don't want to hear about. Firstly, I guess, a little confusion on the process, in that you have a report on the development agreement in front of you that's to be received presumably tonight. Next week you'll be doing the rezoning, and of course, we all know that after a public hearing for rezoning, no further input is required. So will the development agreement aspects be part of the discussion for the rezoning as well, or will it just be the land use? I think, I'm not quite sure where, how that works, so that's a question. If anybody's gonna answer me, but that's a question. Can't believe you'll answer me? Okay. Within the, within the development agreement stuff, I do have a few comments. Firstly, item C, where it says, retain the current multi-use surface trail from Anchorage Road to Seafield Road across from Matilda Drive. I think that there's a couple of issues there. Firstly, there is no trail from Seafield Road to Matilda, or from Sellic Road to Matilda, so I think there's, that there's a bit of an issue that it doesn't exist yet. Part of the trail that does exist, along by the orchard there, very poorly constructed, probably built temporarily, the city had its crews out after last winter doing repairs to the trail. Somebody did repairs this winter, I don't know whether it was the city or the developer, but I would hope that as part of this development, there becomes a requirement to build that to acceptable standards, because again, and I'm not sure whether the section that's really bad is within the city park or would be part of what's eventually owned and maintained by the stratas, but whoever owns it, it should be built right to begin with, and right now it's not. So that would be a concern to me. Item D says, any new roads will be developed as public roads, and I thank you for that, that was a point of contention earlier, and I still want you to take on responsibility for the trails and riparian. I'll keep harping at you until you convince me otherwise. But then it says, a statutory right-of-way, but we require to access the existing dedicated road. And I've been thinking about that all, I have no idea what that means or why it is or what it is, so it's just a mystery. I don't know what's connecting what with that statutory right-of-way, so I don't understand. I'm not the smartest guy in the room, but I don't. Under the riparian habitat, off-site riparian to be completed after 470 residential units, and I wonder if anybody has any concept of what that means? We talk about these numbers of units, and counting them up on the plan, just quickly between, I think, like most people, I believe the single-family will sell like hotcakes and the townhouses will sell. Recent history on the low-rises has been painful, I would say, for anybody who owned them, and even the developer at the last meeting suggested there's just no market for the high-rise towers. So 475 units, it may mean that that doesn't get built within any of our lifetimes, or certainly not for another generation. It's, it's an ambitious thing, so if that's what you want, that's fine, but I think you should, you should be looking at those in terms of what is the timeframe, as opposed to what is the number of units, and maybe just juggling them around a little bit, depending on what your priorities are. And I'll leave that to you guys. My priority would be to put the riparian stuff a little higher than some of the other stuff, but I didn't stand for council or get elected, so I have to defer to your wisdom on that one. Off-site infrastructure upgrades on Seafield Road. It's confusing to me, it sounds like you're crossing, taking the sidewalk on one side of the road and then flipping it to the other, and then there's also discussion of how that would tie into trails. And if I look at, and I know this is, this is different, but there was one drawing in the package, it's called Seafield Road Sanitary Sewer. It doesn't talk about a sidewalk, but there's a little gray squiggle that looks like it's a sidewalk, it looks like it could well be the trail going towards Matilda Drive and then turning up Seafield. If that was the intention, that would make, to me, more sense than to flip the sidewalk over anywhere else. I do think that the trail system should consider a diagonal thing from Anchorage over to Royal Roads. I think that's the desire line, that's where we see the, a lot of the walkers, cyclists, the commuter cyclists, they like to take that, as opposed to climbing up Lagoon Hill, which is a feat in itself. So I don't know whether that's, obviously, the sanitary sewer drawing, I don't think we could say is showing where the sidewalk goes, because it's in conflict with some of the words. I'm not sure anybody's quite resolved the best route for the sidewalks on Seafield and tying into the trails on-site. I like what's shown on that drawing, but it's not what it says in your report, so you might want to think about that. So I think, I just think there's a few things to think about on this development agreement, which is why, you know, I don't want it to sort of get glossed over and then go through the rezoning, where you talk about how many units, and then it's too late to talk about the development agreement. So that's why I think it's important to come and talk about these things. On the next page, Heatherbell Road, completion of works and services on Heatherbell Road will be required before occupancy of any of the proposed residential buildings fronting Heatherbell. Well, that's the 12 or 16-story towers, whatever they are, which again, I don't expect to see for 25 or 30 years, so again, that's what you want, go ahead, but at least think that one through. The Goldfinch Road construction is after 350 dwelling units, and in other places, you talk about the works and services on the roads have to be done when you're building, doing the building permit adjacent to it. I guess you're, it sounds to me like you could build the townhouses and single-family that are proposed in that area, but not upgrade Goldfinch? And again, that's, that's your choice, but I just want to make sure that's what you're doing. Another thing to me, when, and under G, provide rumble cuts and line painting solutions to emphasize a slowdown message to drivers within 12 months following, but doesn't say where. I would hope that there's not too many of these on Lagoon Road. Lagoon Road, as probably you all know, is sort of, in the cycling community, is one of those go-to places. If you can cycle up Lagoon Hill, that sets you at a certain status of cycling in this community. When I can do it, I'll brag about it. So it's, you know, a lot of cyclists do cycle up Lagoon Road, it's a good cycle, as part of, you know, the community involvement in cycling and in healthier communities, that should be encouraged. But again, if we look at the cross-section for Lagoon Road, the plan is not to do anything on the uphill side of the road, it's to put in parking bays on the downhill side, and I think there's three houses that have their driveways on the downhill side in that section. I'm not sure there's a lot of value to parking bays. I think the cyclists would tell you there's a lot of value to a cycle lane up there. Maybe it's too late to get one all the way up, I don't know, but I think, and hopefully, I guess all I'd like to hear is, yeah, we hear you, Stuart, we thought about it, but we think, you know, we, we've got another answer, and that's fine, but I just want to make sure that these points are brought up, so that they can be considered and addressed. Another pet peeve of mine that I brought up before is this J, extend the concrete sidewalk along Machosen Road from Lagoon Road to Sangster, which is not very far, as long as it doesn't cost more than $10,000. And, you know, I don't know what it's gonna cost, $10,000 will probably get you 80% of the way there, and you kind of go, why would you stop? Or, you know, it seems like small change to cap it at $10,000 for a little thing like that, when you look at some of the other obligations in here. And, yeah, those are the points I wanted to bring up, and I guess I would like to know what's, what the status of the development agreement is and how it ties in with the rezoning, and if there's more time to discuss it, or if it's separate, or I don't think you can talk about it after rezoning hearing, so I guess I'd like some feedback on that. Thank you.
Thanks. And just, we have about 20 minutes allocated for this, so you might be the last speaker, folks.
I'll make it quick and short.
Thank you.
Brian Morrison, 250 Seafield Road. I also echo a lot of the comments from the residents in the Lagoon area. My biggest concern, I think, is actually due with the timelines associated with the new amendment in the actual proposal. To me, the 350 units is far too high. Currently, if I'm correct, there's 88 units over in Ocean Grove, so if we were to look at timelines, we're looking at four times what's currently there, before we see any road upgrades in our local neighborhood. For me, that's not acceptable. I'm hoping that council will take the time to really consider the actual timelines, or look at a possible maximum period of time before we see the road improvements. Setting it for 350, we could be looking at this in 10 to 15 years. Like this fellow said, it could be not even within our lifetime. So I'd like to see either a total number of units set and/or timelines specifically set. These need to be done by this point in time, because I think we could be sitting on this for many, many years, before we see the improvements. If those towers never solidify, then we may, may never get the improvements we need. One other question I had, just a bit of quick math, I looked at, if there's 350 units proposed, have an average cost of $400,000 per unit, we're looking at a gross total sales of about $140 million. Now therefore, if we're waiting for $140 million worth of sales, we'd be looking at one point, or basically 1.4 million for road upgrades, if I'm correct. That's 1% of their gross annual sales for the units proposed, seems like it's too high. The other question that would have been raised in previous discussion, I wasn't here for the last one, was the reason the Seafield roads specifically were on hold is because of the construction traffic that was gonna be going up and down Seafield now. With the new proposed entrance of Heatherbell, we will not have that traffic, therefore, ideally, we'll have the improvements done sooner than later. Other than that, I, you know, echo a lot of the other thoughts, but I won't, you know, reiterate, but I really appreciate your time, and I hope that you can take into great consideration the comments tonight and again, next week regarding this development, because it's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. One, yeah, we'll squeeze you one more.
My name's Gary Klein, I live on 3234 Bullgate Lane, and I'm a bit confused, I think I need to follow up with someone to find out about specifically the riparian area and the creeks and the ponds. I've heard a lot, I haven't read the documents, but I'm, I've been at Ocean Grove right from the beginning. My understanding initially was that is federal and not provincial or municipal. I hear a lot of things going on here about municipal decisions being made around a federal waterway, and I'd like to see full disclosure on the agreements that were done in the past federally. I'd like to see what the plans are and why developer, and my understanding in the past was that if that wasn't repaired within a certain timeframe, that the federal government could come in and actually repair it and charge it back. I don't know if that goes back to the developer, to the city or whoever, but I'm extremely concerned and confused as to why these discussions are going on over waterways that seem to be outside of the jurisdiction. And maybe I'm mistaken, but I'd like to get some further information on all of this and disclosure from council or the city, as well as the developer and the federal government.
Certainly. If you want to take my card, and then what we'll do is we'll hook something up and have a conversation with staff. Okay. All right, folks, that will conclude public participation for this evening. If we are through our meeting at a reasonable time, there is an opportunity, if those folks want to stick around, but we'll see what that entails. Moving on to our next item is mayor's message. Oh, yes, thank you. Go to get our other council member here.
Just leave her up there.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's.
That's why we're getting up here.
Don't think I have anything.
We're on, we're on buy loss.
One of the events we've got coming tomorrow is Mercy Help Me Out Legend, Local Legends, so there has been a very creative documentary produced recently in the city of Callwood with the helps of many of our friends, featuring a number of our sort of pioneer sector of our community, and that's airing tomorrow night at 7:00. So we're turning council chambers into movie theater, so anybody who's interested in coming up and, and taking a look at what's been produced, I've had the sneak peek on it, and it looks wonderful, so looking forward to it. Popcorn, yeah, popcorn, snacks, good things happening. Looking to adopt one set of minutes, folks, please, regular meeting of council, March 9th.
Move adoption, your worship.
All those in favor, posed, motion carried. Receipt on two sets of minutes, protective services of February 11th, and special committee of the whole budget on February 25th. All those in favor, posed, motion carried. Correspondents requiring council direction, I do have this email. Director Mike Hicks from the Wanda Fuka region of our fair neighborhood. Seapark Community Recreation Center in Suk is submitting a grant application under the UBCM Strategic Priorities Fund to build an artificial turf field in Suk. This application is sponsored by the CRD as a regional project, and was hoping that you, the city of Callwood, would consider endorsing and supporting this project. I'm sure you're aware that we have upwards of 10,000 registered soccer players and hundreds, possibly thousands, of football, rugby, baseball, slow pitch, fastball, youth and adults within the CRD boundary, and in addition to these players, we have soccer academies in school systems, explosion of rugby programs. Suk does not have an all-weather sports field, and when it's closed, it's usually closed for good balance of the year, due to the rain and moisture. The Suk and Wanda Fuka visiting teams have had many of their games canceled out, so they're looking for municipal support in the application for grant funding. It's similar to what we have done in the past for West Shore Parks and Rec. I have it from the administrator from West Shore Parks and Rec, that she too feels that this is a very worthwhile project, so needing direction from our council, that a letter could be written and sent off to Seapark.
So moved. Second.
Question, comments? All those in favor, posed, motion carried? I'll get that sent off. Presentations has been canceled, for Woodwin Farms presenter being ill. New Business Parks Rec Culture Committee Meadow Park Annual Maintenance Cost Estimate?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the January 19th, 2015 Parks Recreation and Culture Committee meeting, a request was put forward for an estimated maintenance cost for annual maintenance at Meadow Park in Royal Bay. Our Parks Foreman Gord provided the committee with an estimate of $41,952 for salaries only. This includes a number of jobs involved with regular park maintenance, however, it does not reflect the cost for vehicles, equipment, materials, contractors or tree contractors, and shove replacement. Meadow Park is meant to be a signature park that sets the development off at the right tone and ensure that the marketing of the properties is successful. The developer is waiting for an answer on the park concept before he continue, so there will be no progress with this proposal unless the committee recommends the council and council agrees to the concept. On pages three and four, you will see two preliminary basic concept maps that are still in the basic planning stages. And so I put forward that the Parks Recreation and Culture Committee recommend to council that, one, council welcome the creation of the Meadow Park located at Royal Bay, and as shown in the conceptual map or plan reviewed by Parks Recreation and Culture Committee at their February 24th, 2015 meeting, and two, that the cost of the maintenance of Meadow Park be monitored in the early years to determine whether this can be a model for future park development.
Discussion, council? Counselor Day?
I guess, I'm looking at, at the design, and there's lots that I can see is good about the design, in that it has a nice perimeter style of trail, so there's, you know, more than one way to go through the park and enjoy it. It appears to have a lot of plantings, but this is not a very detailed park plan, so I would have preferred to see a more detailed plan come forward, especially from such a high-quality developer as we have in Royal Bay. And so I do still have some concerns, just in that it's hard to get a grasp of something like this, where we don't have a scale and we don't really have much more detail. So that is my, my only concern, is that being as this is to be a signature park, I would have hoped that we would have more of a signature plan to go with it.
Is, is there more detail coming through to committee on this?
The, most parks created at subdivision are never reviewed by committee at all. This is something that I wanted to institute, and, and so if there's a process that council wants when that happens, then we should probably discuss that. But there are currently dozens of parks in, in Callwood that have been created even since I came, that have never been reviewed by any committee or council, so we don't have an established process.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you. I'm just curious for my, like, if I look at any of the other reports, we have senior managers who are signing off on these reports, and there's no signatures on any. So maybe, Pat, I'll look to you, is, was this put through senior management? Did anybody actually review this report?
There, there isn't a report there.
It's just, it's just the memo.
Well, it's-
Oh, it's a, well, it's a recommendation.
It's the minutes from the committee.
Okay, so that's it, so the-
Which is normal process, when there's been a recommendation at committee.
Well, I guess, because, I mean, there, there should be, we're talking about, there's a financial implication here, $41,952. So wouldn't that normally be presented to finance to see if they would recommend it or not recommend it? I guess that's where I'm getting confused on this.
I, I can't think of anything we do that doesn't have a financial implication.
Yeah, but we agreed that we were going to always have a financial implication statement on reports.
Yeah, and there is in the report, with the committee.
Right, but they haven't, but, but nobody, but nobody from finance has signed off on it.
Yeah, in the report, they went to committee, yes.
The report, probably.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it would have been, it was contained in the report, and actually, this was supposed to be at our previous council meeting, but the concept drawing was missing.
Okay.
So that's-
So there are- So there are, so staff have reviewed it then?
Yes, in the initial report that went to committee.
That was my initial question. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Noll?
Yeah, I just wanted to comfort council on this. These costs are not going to be incurred in 2015 and probably not in 2016. This is just a heads up because this will be the most expensive part to maintain in all of Callwood. So start worrying about it probably for 2017.
And thus we have the monitoring part in section two on the recommendation. Anyone else? Counselor Day?
Thank you. I've just called up the agenda from the Special Parks and Recreation Committee, Culture Committee from the 24th of February where I believe this was presented. And the memo is included there and does not include signatures of senior staff, so.
I apologize for misleading you and that's so out of the norm.
I, yeah, and I think it just may be a factor of, I believe that our park staff are not as familiar with bringing forward reports. And so it may just be part of the learning curve.
So if I may, going back then, has senior staff reviewed this and signed off on it?
Clearly not from what Counselor Day is saying. Which is not normal process.
And it's not in there in the other one?
So forgive my, I don't know from Robert's rules on this, so how do I?
Refer.
Is it refer or is it a table? Or like if I want to just say send it to our next council meetings to just get a refer?
Refer just past.
So can I make that motion, please?
Discussion on the motion?
Just a comment that if this does come back, if the motion passes, I would like to see better maps than we were provided. There were color maps, as I recall, at the meeting. I would really like council to get a copy of those.
So colored maps and senior staff to weigh in. Let's take a look at what that budget is because even though it may not arise until 2017, it might be wise for us to be looking at some conditional budget requirements in the earlier years, not this year, but for next for sure. So with that called the question on the last motion, which is to refer this back to staff for all that information, all those in favor? Posed, motion carried, which means that the other recommendation just stays out there. Planning and Land Use Committee, 7.2.1 memo, Deputy Director of Planning in regards to the draft development agreement information.
I will have to excuse myself once again.
Thank you, your worship. The memorandum before council is in regards to development of the Ocean Grove Project. The land use bylaw and official plan amendments for this project have been, have received first and second reading. Public hearing is scheduled for Monday, March 30th at 6:00 PM. Multiple reports have gone before council relating to Ocean Grove Project, resulting in various amendments to the conditions of rezoning as originally proposed in the staff report to the Planning and Land Use Committee. Staff have thought it prudent that a draft development agreement be made available to council and the public for information prior to the public hearing. This memorandum is intended for informational purposes only. No council direction is required and staff recommend that council receive this memo for information. Thank you.
I'll move receipt, your worship? Second.
Counselor Day?
Thanks. Just a quick question on, and by the way, thank you very much for putting together a summary of the many twists and turns as we've been getting down this road. One of the questions I had was related to item B on the off-site infrastructure upgrades. It says that a temporary asphalt sidewalk will be provided within 12 months after adoption of the rezoning. I'm assuming this is, because it refers to Heather Bell earlier, I think we're talking about Heather Bell Road. But it doesn't say where, from where to where or which side of the road the temporary sidewalk is going to be located on. So I'm just not sure where that leaves us. Is that something that needs to be in this agreement or?
This is just a draft and it will be part of the basis of going forward into the public hearing, as I understand, and that any of these little anomalies are the parts and pieces that we question and bring forward at that time. But if staff have an opportunity to clarify at this point, it might be something.
Yeah, I think the clause refers to Heather Bell Road in the beginning of the clause. It would be on the building size of the street, just by matter of course of the way that the development will unfold and how this will apply. But we could certainly add some clarification to that before registration.
Thank you. And if I may, just, it also refers to indeed to a servicing agreement. And I just wondered if that was meant to be included or it says Lagoon Road will be upgraded with the standards prescribed by the city and is shown in the servicing agreement. Did I miss something? Was there something I'm not seeing for the servicing agreement?
The servicing agreement is one of the documents that is part of the development agreement, so.
I think what she's saying is it's not in this package of information, so just.
No, I don't believe that those documents have been completed yet. I believe this is meant to be part of those documents.
More to come.
Sorry, and just one last question on it was under item K. It mentions video detection for vehicles and bicycles. Is that a new technology as opposed to the sensor loops in the road?
It's, I know it's over 10 years old. It's probably older than that. It's fairly common these days and it saves the issue of loops breaking when the road suffers some sort of crack.
Counselor Noll?
Yes, my impression is that the public hearing is dealing specifically with the OCP amendment and not with the rezoning agreement. So this is just basic information for people that have concerns about how the development is happening under the OCP amendment. I do have one comment about the report is the map on Riparian area phasing. The phases are completely unreadable on my copy of the map. You can't tell one, two from three. So I would prefer a better map to be placed into the.
To differentiate in there?
Yes, as you can see, they're just shades of dots on.
Shades of gray. Staff?
Just like to clarify that the public hearing scheduled for the 30th is for both bylaws covering rezoning and the OCP amendment.
Called question then on the motion before us to receive. All those in favor? Posed, motion carries? Item 7.3 Finance and Admin, 7.3.1 Report Director of Admin in regards to West Shore Parks and Rec Society's Special Resolution approved at 2014 Annual General Meeting. Is that going to be you leading that one, Counselor Martin, or shall somebody else?
I assumed it was going to be Finance and Admin, so I assumed it was Terry.
Terry, are you familiar with this one or we'll just go? Lovely, Pat?
Thank you. So this is coming out of email correspondence that we received from the West Shore Parks and Recreation. They wanted to find out if the city of Callwood was going to appoint an alternate director to the West Shore Board of Directors. And this is pretty much stemming from the Schlenker versus Togromson case law where they've said if you have council members appointed to the board of a society, their requirement is to represent the interests of the board and not the interests of the council. So we have some municipalities or the electoral area who finds themselves in a position where, because they're serving on the West Shore Board, they can't represent their own constituents. And in the electoral area, when you're the only representative for the whole area, they have no representation whatsoever. So at the Annual General Meeting in 2014, West Shore Parks and Recreation passed a special resolution that has been properly registered through the society. I think it's a corporation of companies or I'm not quite sure of the proper terminology. And what they've done is made amendments to their constitution or their bylaws that allows you to now have a choice to appoint an alternate director. It's a citizen appointment instead of a council or a director of electoral area appointment. And that will allow you to have somebody step in and participate in meetings and vote at meetings if one of our four representatives, two counselors, two citizens, are unable to attend. I know for the most part, we can have somebody who is away from a meeting and it doesn't really affect the meeting too badly. But sometimes we have issues that might be coming up where every vote counts and you might want to have the opportunity to have that fourth person who could step in for somebody who's unable to attend. There's no financial implications unless council wants us to do newspaper advertisements instead of just website, a word-of-mouth type of communications. And it's completely council's decision whether they do or they don't.
Counselor Martin?
Just one more thing to add to that. Also, it's my understanding we do have the ability to do an absentee ballot so that you do have that ability to give that vote to another person. It has occurred in the past and I don't know if that has been why they're expecting the alternate now instead of the absentee ballot. Do you know?
Unfortunately, I wasn't at the Annual General Meeting, so it looks like Counselor Day might have an answer to that.
I believe the alternate arose out of the Wanda Fuka Electoral Area because of the Schlenker versus Togromson, putting him in a conflict of interest. Without an alternate and with no other regional director to go to, it left that particular area with no vote. Having the ability to have an alternate, I think is a good idea at West Shore Parks and Rec. So I would be happy to move the recommendation with the website used for expressions of interest and possibly considering if members of the Parks and Recreation Committee would be interested in being that alternate.
So you're looking, we have two different ones, so you're looking at that?
Yeah, I move that we receive the report from the Director of Administration and that we appoint an alternate citizen and use the website and/or our existing committee structure to recruit interested individuals.
Secondor for that? Discussion, council? Counselor Martin?
My, I don't necessarily disagree with it, but my only concern is, is I guess you're sending somebody and you're telling them how to vote because they're not going to know anything because they're not normally going to the meetings. And so if you have a special meeting and you're sending an alternate, I guess I'm just trying to figure out if it's more advantageous to just give your vote to a current person who's on the board so that they're voting for themselves and for you versus sending an alternate person who has no idea.
I think that that vote would have to be within our realm. So between the four of you that represent Callwood, one of you were not there. You could pass along.
To one, yeah, correct.
So I don't see it as being, you know, as great of an impact for those municipalities who have multiples. But for Highlands has only one representative. The Regional District has only one representative. Few Royal, I think, is simply one. You know, I'm not seeing it quite as profound for Langford or ourselves where we've got multiples already there and a mechanism within. That's what you're getting at, right?
Yeah, that's just.
Counselor Day?
Just on that, I think it's kind of an opportunity to create greater engagement. I know I'm the alternate down at CRD and it does put an additional onus on me. I go to meetings that I'm just there to learn. And I think it would be good to create greater ties between our own Parks and Recreation and Culture Committee and the West Shore Parks and Recs and Culture Committee. So that's my only thoughts on the matter. And I do think it would, it does probably affect the other municipalities more than ourselves. And I think it's better to have, I certainly, I'm not a big fan of the email voting scenario and I know it has been done at West Shore Parks and Rec. I would prefer to see bodies.
Staff?
I just want to mention, it's unfortunate the special resolution only tells you wording has been replaced in its entirety or portions of it and replaced with. But I've noticed in here it's got subsection 33.3 of the original, I'm not sure if it's the constitution or the bylaw, is deleted and replaced with a director may not vote by proxy. So I don't know if council would like to just recess this discussion and carry on with the rest of the meeting and I can actually go pull the proper information and then we can actually look at that, what it says and if this is really saying there is no longer a proxy vote or is this speaking to something else?
Do you want to recess it or?
Yeah, I'm happy to recess.
Just take a pause. Pull that info.
Just to clarify on the alternate as well, the alternate director, if you should appoint one, would get entire agenda packages just like everybody else. So they'd be able to constantly be reading and staying up on what is happening at the West Shore Recreation. They could even attend any of the public meetings. They just wouldn't have a vote if all the members were there. They'd only be called on as a voting member if they were there to represent one of the four regular directors.
We could call it a training process.
Rather than making her do the work, why don't we just let her, why don't we just do an alternate?
That's the motion that's on the table.
Yeah, so I'll retract my recess.
Any other comments then on the motion that's before us, which is to allow for that alternate and to advertise on the website? Anybody? Seeing none, called question, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries? Just got out of a job, Pat?
You're welcome.
Transportation, Public Infrastructure, Engineer Reports on Active Transportation, Innovative Infrastructure Funding Program.
Some time ago, we obtained a grant from the CRD or a promise of a grant for $75,000 towards the cost of improving Kelly Road. During the public input into the Kelly Road project, it was suggested that sewers be included. So that project is now a much bigger project and has been, a bigger grant has been applied for and the project is in fact put off till 2016. The deadline for this program is March 31st, 2015. And apparently it cannot be extended. So staff have been in contact with the CRD staff about using the funding for another purpose that will serve the aims of the grant. And in 2014, the city had budgeted $50,000 to install bicycle parking and that was to be paid for from gas tax. And we were working with the West Shore Parks and Recreation staff on that, but the planning was not completed by the end of 2014. And I don't believe that was rebudgeted in 2016, 15, I mean. This is an opportunity to use that $75,000 for something that we had previously budgeted. The city does not have to contribute towards this. The grant will cover the entire cost. And indeed, there's $25,000 left over, which in discussions with the CRD staff, it has been suggested that it go to Royal Roads University for bicycle parking on their campus with a separate agreement between CRD and Royal Roads. um, on their campus with a separate agreement between C R D and Royal Roads. So, uh, not all of the, um, work can be completed by March thirty-first, um, but, uh, the, uh, items can be ordered and delivered and C R D has accepted, uh, that as reasonable for release of the grant. So this was brought direct to committee because of, uh, council, because of the short timelines. And the recommendation is that council approve entering into an agreement with Capital Regional District for fifty thousand dollars in active transportation innovative infrastructure funding under the C R D U B C M Pedestrian and Cycling Master Plan Implementation Pilot Project under the Federal Gas Tax Agreement for the supply and installation of three covered bicycle shelters and a repair station at the Callwood Exchange. Thank you.
So moved?
Counselor Day?
Thanks, um, I feel really, um, good about getting some bicycle parking at West Shore Parks and Rec and, uh, at the, um, at the exchange. Um, I'm a little concerned though about the, um, repair station and what the potential... I mean, we've done really well with combating, um, graffiti and vandalism there in the last little while, but I'm just concerned, uh, about a bicycle repair station that has tools that are on wires that may be, um, vandalized. Um, so I just wondered, um, if that, uh, if there's any information on the, the repair station and, and whether it's had, uh, some testing, uh, for being, having some sort of longer life.
Um, I was on a long walk on the Galloping Goose, uh, last Thursday night and, um, found a bicycle repair station at Sanich City Hall as I passed by. And, um, I'd never seen one before and, um, and I, I had a good look at it because I was interested in that issue. And, um, you would have to be very well equipped to vandalize it. Uh, they're, they're designed to be in out-of-the-way places. Um, the wires holding the tools on are really quite thick. Um, with appropriate burglary tools, you probably could, um, take them, but it's, uh, it's going to be, um, something that's probably not going to happen in that very public place. The one that I saw, um, on the Galloping Goose was not really th- that publicly visible, um, especially at the time of night I was passing by.
Anybody else? Um, just a question to staff. You say here that it was seventy-five thousand, but now C R D's given the approval for fifty, um, not the seventy-five, and then you're talking about twenty-five to go to Royal Roads. So is it still seventy-five with fifty and twenty-five or?
Well, essentially twenty-five of that grant is going to Royal Roads because it'll be a separate agreement with them. Um, we, um, we only need fifty to do what we want to do.
Okay, so twenty-five for the bike stand at the turnaround and then another twenty-five at the other location? Is that what?
No, no, fifty for the bike parking and the repair.
Okay, so back on that. I just wanted to make sure that it, C R D's coming up with the seventy-five ultimately?
Yeah, but twenty-five will go to Royal Roads.
Yes, okay, all right. Anyone else? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries? Uh, moving then on to bylaws, bylaw number one five four nine, final reading, Highway Closure and Disposal Bylaw, number one five four nine, twenty fourteen Glen Karen Lane.
Move final? Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried? Uh, motion to move in camera?
So moved?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, you did say at the earlier part of the meeting that if there was people in the audience that wanted to remain and continue the public participation?
We have, I can probably afford you, anybody else that's here wants, I can get fifteen, twenty minutes?
So before we start?
Yes.
The procedure bylaw requires you to have a council resolution to extend the public participation period by majority vote of council. Um, just to say that it would be-
Because we've never done this before.
Well, and we don't know if people are going to stay or not stay, so before we do it, we should have that motion on the table to extend public participation.
So a motion, council to extend? I would so move? Second, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carried? Okay, here's where you get to come back up and have a chat.
Is this dealing with Ocean Grove again?
Yes, you can-
I shall leave again.
Counselor Trace will remove herself?
Thank you, um, my name is Leslie Cormode and I'm a resident and owner at Ocean Grove and have been for six years. And in, with the impending rezoning that will be discussed next week, I just want to draw attention to the archaeological study that was done in two thousand and seven and the consequent report, and that number is D C R U eleven fifty-one that was written in two thousand and eight. And just ask that any rezoning that does take place that absolutely respects the Heritage Conservation Act, um, if it means a higher density and a rezoning. So I would very much like to bring that to the attention of council, thank you.
Hello there, my name's Russ Grace, I'm three oh six thirty, thirty-two, Saloque at Ocean Grove. Keep this short, I just want to cover one item. The staff, uh, and the developer have done a good job. They've figured out how many dollars there's going to be in the infrastructure on the off-site works. They've got a lot of money there, you're dealing with, um, some big numbers. Um, the recommendations are leave Lagoon, which is quite a busy road, as is seven and a half meters of paving with improvements on one side. And on the other side, there's, um, a very quiet rural lane that services thirteen properties. That's all that's there. And four of them are large properties that could easily upgrade that road when there's more houses. So I think it's around one point three million scheduled, suggested to go into Sea Cliff Road. I really think you should put most of that money out onto Lagoon and do a really good job of it. Thank you. Um, hopefully, somebody can talk to the developer about that, maybe even before we get to our meeting next week, okay? Thank you.
Anyone else? See, last chance, folks. I really appreciate you all coming out and, and making your comments known to council, so thank you. Um, with that, then we will conclude the public participation round two and, uh, look for adjournment to go in camera.
So moved?
All those in favor? Opposed, motion-